Can you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to the Board of Trustees meeting for the School of Tennessee Speedway for February 12th. We are working from a 13 item agenda. The first item is to approve the minutes of the January 8th, 2019.
Mr. President, may I interrupt? Can I ask you to amend the agenda and take off items two, six, and eight? We had planned to have architects presentations tonight, but much like our student body, we are, even at the board level, we have illness and we have less than a complete board and we'd rather bring that back at another time. So, I don't think it takes action, I just think that if you're willing to take off, obviously they're not here or we've told them not to plan to present.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
First item.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the minutes of January 8th, 2019.
Thank you, Laura. Second. Thank you, Bill. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Day Fund and the Operations Fund.
And, Mr. President, we have, the school corporation has legally advertised a notice to taxpayers of our intent to seek an additional appropriation of $500,000 from the Rainy Day Fund to consider air conditioning the high school gymnasium and $30,000 from the Operations Fund. If I can explain, the Rainy Day Fund was a project that until we transfer money in, we don't know what our balance is going to be. We had a very positive year in 2018. The balance in the fund is about $788,000. A hundred thousand is appropriated, but that leaves a balance of $688,000. I can tell you the project, we don't believe will be anywhere near $500,000. And the second additional appropriation is in the Operations Fund for $30,000. And this is purely, no other way to say it, my mistake. We changed the entire accounting system for schools. The general fund, in general, became the education fund. And so expenses previously in the general fund moved to the education fund. And expenses typically in capital projects, transportation, moved to the operations fund. What I didn't catch was, what we usually put in the general fund, a $30,000 appropriation, which was about $7,000 for summer swim lessons, and there are probably people in this room who got those swim lessons, they've been going on for many, many years, or at least your kids maybe have had those swim lessons. It's a free, open thing. And, for the past several years, especially since we've had the referendum, we've supported the parks in their recreation budget to make sure that, and in fact, that's expanded to include art programs. And so consequently, in the past, we've supported them with up to $15,000. I made that potentially 20, depending on where their budget is. But, that has to come out of operations. We have the money budgeted in education, we can't pay it out of education. We have to budget operations. So, having said that, now that I've explained it, I'm explaining it for the public, because the first thing you need to do is open a public hearing for public comment.
Wow.
Hearings over. Go ahead and close the hearing.
Okay, now you can, now you can close the hearing, because there is no public comment. And now, my recommendation would be, and again, I'm going to say that this is, you're doing and you're appropriating the money to spend if you so desire. I would tell you, I sincerely believe that the operations expenses, summer swim lesson and recreation are absolutely what we always intended. The question becomes, do we want, not need, to air condition the main gym? And we need to see what those bids would come in. But I would recommend, again, you're not spending anything here, you're just appropriating. Now, also know that a month from now, 27 days, we will take this to the town council, because they have to approve an ordinance in March. And then we need to take it down and file it with the DLGF, who confirm we have enough money, and then if they approve it. So, my recommendation is you start the process by approving this additional appropriation.
Mr. President, I'd like to move that we approve this additional appropriation for $500,000 from the Rainy Day Fund and $30,000 from the operations.
Thank you, Bill.
I second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed?
Okay, now, this is a resolution, and as such, we need you to sign on your office. We have president, vice president, and member this evening. The secretary can't attest that you are who you are, so I'm going to ask the vice president to cross out secretary and put vice president. So if you, and we'd sign two, because one goes to us and one eventually go to the town
The next item is to approve participation in the CIESC Indiana Online Academy.
We are founding member of the Central Indiana Educational Service Center, and one of the thriving and most significant programs they have is their online learning program. As members, we get a reduced rate for our students to participate in these classes online. We actually have a couple teachers who teach these classes online in the evening and on the weekends. And every year, we have used this most extensively for credit recovery, but also for enrichment or to have a class that we typically don't offer, that we may be able to get through the IOA. It's been a great partnership. I would recommend, and we've been, this is routine, we have done this year after year after year, so there are a couple, number one, and I believe we ought to do it with the same terms we always do, we do not charge our students any fee, we pay the fee. And, students could pay up to $50, we have not done that. We're trying to help them with credit recovery. And so I'd ask you approve this agreement, authorize me to sign it. Now, I would also say, this has been a successful working partnership now, since it's been open in a part of things for a decade. Would there be any value in simply approving participation this year and ongoing participation? Should there be no changes in the program? Because it hasn't changed. It's just a matter of whether you want to see it back as an action item every year, or do you want to approve it essentially until something changes? I just didn't know if it might be, take one item off the agenda that has been a pretty good partner for quite a while. I recommend you approve it. That's my first thing.
I'll move to approve it, to approve our continued participation in the CIESC Indiana Online Academy, and include that, that would encompass the agreement until such, you know, the renewal of the same agreement. And should the agreement change, then it could be, then that would no longer apply and it should be brought back before us again.
I'll second that.
Great. It's been moved and seconded, that we approve the existing agreement and continued participation as long as the agreement stays the same?
That's, that's exactly, and Laura's got that exactly right. I don't want to say Dr. DeGee, because DeGee's got that exactly right. Because if the agreement changes in substance, we'd want to be back. This is, this is, other than the dates, obviously, so, yes.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. The next item is to approve the junior high field trip.
And when we say the junior high field trip, it's because this happens every other year, seventh and eighth graders, the band goes and participates in a competition. It happens to be at a place called Kings Island in Cincinnati, Ohio, so it's out of state, so we asked the board to approve it. It is, quite frankly, routine. These are the junior high band kids, they are wonderful students. They have to be eligible, which is, this is a great motivator at the junior high, because so many kids participate in band and choir, that if they would have a disciplinary notice, they can't participate in this trip. So they're on their best behavior from now through, through the end. As you can see, three or four faculty member, it wouldn't surprise me if there weren't more. If, I would be surprised if it was as few as 15 parent chaperones, it'll be closer to 20. This is, this is just literally a good time had by all. All I can say is, it has worked. Part of the reason, if you look at the date, you're saying, well, gosh, Ken, they submitted this in August. It's so routine that they submitted it at the start of the year, but I don't bring it to you until I know that we're a little closer and that nothing's happened to change that in any way. So, I would recommend you approve this field trip, this extended field trip out of state.
I'll make a motion that we approve the proposed music groups trip to Kings Island in May of 2019, from the junior high.
I'll second, but I've got a question. I don't know if I, this is the first time I've ever noticed this. What do, how, does anybody know, like, how, you know, the, those who need financial assistance may choose to be involved in? How many students, are there students that can't go?
Let's ask Mr. Disney, who's been on this trip and knows the answer to that probably specifically.
I've actually been on this trip also.
Oh, wow. Well, knowing you, you've probably paid for some of it.
Yeah, to answer that question, they start fundraising things at the very beginning of the year.
So, okay.
So that...
So we don't have kids not going?
Not one child does not attend because they couldn't afford it. They do fundraising and things, and part of that is, they can work in, their parents can work in the concession stand at basketball games, and the music department gets monies for, you know, for that, and so...
Perfect.
There's never a situation where a student doesn't go because of money.
Perfect.
Anything about? Any discussion? Aside that? All those in favor? Next item, report on I-Step results.
Mr. Disney and Ms. McIntosh, what do you have for us today?
You didn't have to talk to me, guys. I've given you a packet in front of you, because you may be able to see some of this or you may not. What I'm going to show you is a comparison of I-Step scores this past year in Marion County. I'm going to show you I-Step scores... I-Step scores in Marion County, I'll try to remember the talking to this thing. I-Step scores in Marion County, and of 11 township schools, you can see if they take the total points, which is the way they rank. Speedway's in the top of Marion County. And with 96 total points, and total points, I could go into a long dissertation about how they come up with total points, but total points is a combination of growth and passing rate, to make it short. So we are ranked first in all 11 schools in the county. If you further divide this, your second, second page that you have, if we wanted to look at the performance of our students four through eight, where do we rank in Marion County? And if you look at, and it's, why is it not three through eight? Because the, actually, this should be, the performance part of this should be three through eight. That is a typo in there, that should be three through eight in Marion County, because it is, is based on our third graders taking the test. And as you can see, we are ranked first, Franklin, and it's close behind us, and then Perry. And you'll say, why doesn't IPS scores in there? The one reason is, they're in the appeal process, so their scores are not finalized yet. Then if you want, there's another way we can look at this. That's our performance nine through 12, so our elementary schools, our junior high school, now this is our high school, and our high school is again ranked first in Marion County. 66.3 is the total score for that. But what I think is impressive is the growth. So we look at the growth of our students, and like someone very important once said, performance is what you get when they walk through the door. Growth is, what do we do with them once we have them? And if you look at growth of four through eight, if you look at growth four through eight, roughly a score of 100 points, score of 100 points would be good. And when you see the Speedway's growth, this is an average growth of every student, is 114 and a half points in grades four through eight, and that, that is not a typo, you can't have growth unless you had a third grade score. So, it's four through eight. So we rank first in Marion County in growth, four through eight. And if you look at growth in nine through 12, our high school just knocked it out of the park. The growth in the high school was 131.4. The max that a student could get on growth is 175 points. So when you see that 131, that's an average of every student that took the I-Step test in the 10th grade. What's interesting is, if you start dividing these scores according to the three factors that affect scores the most, and probably the factor that has the biggest effect on scores as we know is free and reduced. The free and reduced, the higher percentage of free and reduced, usually the less achievement that you have. And it's a socioeconomic situation. And if you look at the, how we rank in free and reduced lunches in Marion County, we are third from the bottom. Warren Township, or Washington Township and Franklin Township are at the bottom with us. Remember, those were the ones that were close...
Franklin's the big outlier.
Yeah, if you want to see that, that was how we were kind of ranked, when we ranked from the top to bottom. So, based on the free and reduced part, that's, it's about where we should be. I think what's going to be interesting is, if you take a look at the special ed population. If we ranked according to special ed population, you'll see that Speedway is, is the lowest in this, at 12.5, 12.58. And I've got my theories, and we have a resident expert here on our special education program, but we don't, we have a low percentage of students that are, that are identified as special ed.
Why is that? What's your theory?
Well...
Ms. McIntosh, what's your theory?
Yeah. So the national average is 13 percent. So we want to linger around that number. This is actually an exciting number to me, in special ed world. There are multiple factors that can affect it. I do think that a number that, that lingers around the national average would lend us to believe that we have some effective response to intervention practices in place in our district.
Okay, let me fill you in on the jargon. Response to intervention means a student is struggling and we don't identify them as special ed. We try to provide them services and help them get to grade level without identifying them. Simply put, we try not to, to identify students as having special needs unless they have them.
That's correct.
That we do everything we can.
Right. And when you have a high number of students coming in from impoverished backgrounds, that's especially important, I think, is to make sure that you're providing those, those interventions, making sure that we're not counting perhaps a student's lack of experience and just assuming that they have a disability, so really trying to avoid the over identification. So, I think that's probably one reason that our number is closer to that national average.
And I'm going to say that Ms. McIntosh is probably not giving herself enough credit. I think one of the things that, that affect this is, our, our teachers, our special ed staff are trained that when we hit, when we get a student that needs help, we don't wait to get IEP meetings together. If we identify someone that needs help, we immediately start providing these scaffolds, these, these things that will help students be successful in school. And when those start happening, students start being successful. Not that we don't identify, we do. But we're not quick to do that, we're quick to provide help. And that's, there are schools that do that at the elementary level, okay. Some at the junior high usually doesn't do it very well, to be honest with you. And the high school is usually terrible at it. And I could tell you that all three levels, our, our teachers do a great job of providing supports immediately when they see things happening. I mean, within a couple of weeks, a student that will move in will identify and say, we need to do something to help this child. So I think that is a definite factor in that low number. And then the final category in Marion County is, and this may surprise you, is the English language learners. In Marion County, we rank fourth, and the percentage of students that we have that are, English is not their first language. And we'll save a little bit for the next group to tell you a little bit about our EL program and what's happening with that. So this is Marion County, and...
But I'm going to say something, because, you know, it was just two months ago, we were sitting in a retreat, working with Chromebooks, looking at potential test questions for third graders, and I think we came to the simple conclusion that if you don't know English, how are you ever going to pass that test? And so this is a, our, 15 percent of our kids have to overcome that. And they do. And I don't know when we're going to talk about that, but that, they're doing good job.
15 percent of our population is, 13 percent or 12 and a half percent of our population is, is identified as having a learning disability or a learning issue. 60 percent of them are free and reduced. And, you know, we have 15 percent of those students that their English isn't their first language, and we get the results we do. It's just, it's phenomenal things that our, our teachers and our administrators do. I want to, so we've done that before, but I did it a different way. This time I wanted to say, we've always kind of compared ourselves inside Marion County. And this time I...
And while you get that up, simply stated, I think you as board members have every right to expect that we would be performing like that in Marion County.
Yeah.
Period. We expect ourselves to be that good, and our kids to do that well.
Yeah, this is, this is typical, honestly typical of how we performed in Marion County in the past, and we've done quite well. You probably can't read that from here, but I, let me just tell you that these are 25 surrounding school districts and donut counties around us, from Hendricks County to Hancock County to Johnson County. And what we've done is compared ourselves to, to those schools. And really, Ken said it real well, is we're not, there's sort of 25 school districts here, and you can see we're one, two, three, fourth, fifth in total points. Really, we're fifth in total points in 36 school corporations, because we also include Marion County in that. So we're fifth out of the 36 surrounding us. And I just want to point out to you, if you look at this, in the top, the five that are above us, and even the ones that are close to us, I think you would see a difference in the demographics of those, of those school corporations. So that's the overall points where we would...
But you can look at the one on top, because I talk about them a lot.
Yeah. They did quite well. So how do we do in performance of our, of our three through eight? And our performance in three through eight, we can see it, Speedway's here is 10th, and against it'd be 10th out of 36. And the, so we're about the middle of the pack, or a little above the middle of the pack of those 25 surrounding school districts.
Top third of 35.
Yeah. If you look at growth of that group, growth of that group, which I think is most important, is what do we do with those students? How do we grow those students? And we are fourth in growth out of these school districts, and you'll see that, that Brownsburg's still up there. Brownsburg did a good job of growing in those, four through eight.
Understand how hard that is. That's, that's moving kids at the margin. That's moving kids from 98 percent passing to 99. That's tough to do.
Very much so. And I, but I, you'll see some of the, the school districts that did quite well in the performance, they drop in the growth part of that. If you look at the performance of our 10th graders, performance of our 10th graders, again, we're in the, we're in the top quartile of this, probably top one-third of this list. But look at the growth of our, look at the growth of our 10th graders. The growth of our 10th graders, we would be ranked third. Again, 131.4 that we mentioned in the, in the Marion County list, 131.4 growth points, ranks right up there as third.
I'm going to just interrupt. You know, when you look at, if you go back to the performance points on grade 10, and understand that points end up grading like a grading scale, 90 and above's an A, 80 is a B, 70 is a C. Based on the 10th grade test, there isn't a B school, period. On straight performance, the best school is a C++. Which should tell you something about the test. And there are members of the State Board of Education who want this, the grade to strictly reflect performance. That, that's entirely unfair. That's judging your kids on where their zip code is and what they have. I just want to point that out. We need to be aware, that's no way to do things. It does matter how they perform, but it matters the growth they make. Okay, I'm sorry, John, I just, you just look at that. How can you have a test where the best in the state's got 79 percent?
So then we start looking at the three factors that affect performance the most, and remember the one that, that without a doubt has the biggest effect on performance, and that's free and reduced socioeconomic status. You know, where does Speedway rank in these surrounding counties with that? You'll see that we are the top. The top where we have about 60 percent of our population, 59 percent of our population that is on free or reduced lunches. How does we, how do we, how do we compare in special ed population? Again, I think you may be surprised by this, and that is, our special ed population is, we are close to the, the bottom of these 36 school corporations. The 12 percent, I'm telling you, the way we do it and the way that we provide support affects that number. But what really may surprise you is, where does our EL population, where does that rank in all of the, the surrounding school districts? And again, we are first, and if you look at some of those numbers that...
And four times higher than our next closest. Three and a half, sorry, three and a half times.
Yeah, 15 percent, and there's some of the school corporations that are listed here in our surrounding county that had, or surrounding counties that have less than 1 percent of their population as, as EL. We have just been identified, something with EL, and I'll let, I'll let Andrea tell you what's going on with that, and then I'll answer any questions that you have about this.
I think it's a huge celebration for our teachers. We've been chosen by our Department of Education as a finalist for the Title III Distinguished School District of the Year, and Title III is our English learner program. So, we, we were a finalist, and we had to do a phone interview, and we've now made it to the final, final round, where they will, the representatives from the Department of Ed will be coming and visiting our school district for a half day towards the end of the month. So we're preparing for them to visit a couple of our schools and, and show them our programs, and they'll make a decision from there. But just being in that group is an honor for our teachers.
But anecdotally, you travel and go to presentations. What do people say about our program to you? Other colleagues, other people? Time to brag.
I think a lot of us probably get the same question, is just, what's the secret?
I think a lot of us probably get the same question, is just, what's the secret? We get that a lot, no matter if it's an English learner forum or a special education forum. What's Speedway doing differently? So...
Andrea's being modest. I think the last one she went to, they stopped and said, let's just simply say it, go to Speedway and look at how they do it. Because they do it well. And, and, and it is not Andrea McIntosh, although it is Allison McKay at the high school, and Whitney Meshawky at the junior high, and Derek Eads at the elementary school, and the longtime assistants we have who continue to work in those areas, who stay with us. But more that doesn't make it. What matters is classes with 20 or less students, where frankly, our exceptional teachers have at least a chance to help those kids. Because if they had 28, 29, 30, it would be harder to address and work with those students on an individual basis. So I'll just make one of my last plugs. That's possible, because this community supports its school system with a referendum, which allows us to keep class sizes down. And the biggest problem we have with class sizes right now is a lack of classrooms. But that's, but Andrea gets a lot of com, I don't know that we'll be, frankly, the award means, is not something we search out. They came to us, we didn't apply, and whether we get it or not, what we care about is that our fellow colleagues say, what are you doing? What can we do?
And, and, I'm sorry.
No, no. You just want to brag.
But we've mentioned a couple of the English learner teachers, and this Ken mentioned. Because this is not an EL department award, it's really a district award and, and an award for all of our gen ed teachers who are, who are working so hard to support those kids every day. So, I just think, we haven't shared that much, but after the visit, even if we don't win, we plan to share that with people, so they understand that even though it feels like they're struggling on the day-to-day, trying to learn how to support those kids, we're actually doing a really nice job of it, so...
And if we do win, I got a feeling there'll be a banner on the fence.
Well, the, the small class sizes make such a difference with that special ed number, and, you know, how that, why that number is where it is. And so when you have, you know, 15 kids in your class, you can do all of that type of work with the individual kid.
I agree.
It's just...
And, and in the last five years, many of the elementary teachers we've hired out of school come with a special ed minor. They've, they've been taught, and they've been, IU does a great job with that. Purdue does a great job with that minor. So we, it's no, we look for that. But what other questions do you have for John or Andrea? Because they, they would not brag enough.
I'd say congratulations and thank you for everybody involved in this, for all the work that...
Thanks for the, the double set of information, because I do think it's important. I mean, I think sometimes there's a little bit of like, woo-hoo, we're top in Marion County! And because we want to be, and it's nice to see that those numbers are, that holds up when we put ourselves in comparison.
Thank you. I totally agree. I think that we compared ourselves in Marion County, which we will continue to do. But I think it is important for us to compare ourselves outside of Marion County and see how we're doing. As you can see, we're doing quite well.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is to approve the Praxair agreement.
You might remember back in November, we came to you with the idea of a renovation and some 3D printers for Praxair. It's taken about three months to get the agreement in place, but this, this agreement has been written by actually the School Corporations Council. And so I'm recommending you approve the agreement, and we can then authorize the principal to exhort him to enter in the agreement and get the 3D printers.
History of this. I move that we approve the Praxair agreement as presented.
And I'll second that. Thank you, Bill. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Item number 10, acknowledgement of grants received.
And I'd recommend, Mr. President, if you see nodding down the, of the board members that by consensus you accept the $168,749.26 grants and payments to us. You'll see that, the one thing that's not on here that we need to note, and it's hard to put on here, Allison Transmission has donated a cutaway transmission to our technology department.
What does that mean?
I'm sorry?
What does that mean? What is that?
What it is, a cutaway is a, a regular transmission that would go in a vehicle, but they take part of the housing off, and you can literally put your hands on the gears and take it apart, put it back together. But, but interestingly enough, I'm so glad you asked that, because we have this very unusual opportu, as soon as we brought this down here, and it's those tech guys, Kyle Owen and Eric Roseborough, that always, their first attitude was, well, as soon as we get the 3D printers, we can take and model a gear out of the transmission, and then have the 3D printer print the gear in plastic, and we can put it in, I mean, obviously we can use plastic in a transmission, but, but get the real life experience of how a 3D printer can print in metal. So, yeah, I mean, and they saw this like, that. They, they, these, these kids down in tech, I mean, they, so... So that, we've got to find out a value on that. But, but if you stop, I mean, in fact, there was a picture of it in the local paper last week of this thing. It's on four things. And, and being Allison's, I mean, you know, number one, we're dealing with Praxair, they do everything first class. Allison's brought this device that they had used for training, and now it's, you know, like a last year's model. But they, they expressed it to us, they brought it to our door. They, you know, there's no charge or anything. They don't want any recognition. They just want to give kids a chance to get their hands on. And, and I've got to tell you, a transmission may be the most complicated piece of a vehicle. It's actually significant, it's, it's easily as complicated as the engine, in terms of how many pieces are in it. It's, it's, it's the kind of thing that when I was a kid, you always said you were gonna take a transmission and put it in an old bathtub and take it apart and then put it back together, and you kept the parts in the bathtub, so you didn't lose them, because they were like 1,100 parts.
Who said that?
We did, I mean, we built hot rods. Yeah, I, I can, I mean, I can absolutely tell you that Dr. Lynn Layman, a professor at Ball State University, did that. And his dad worked for GM Transmission, and he tore apart a General Motors transmission in a bathtub and then put it back together to know how it works. And we talked, as kids, that was just like the... I don't think you fully appreciate how meaningful this is. Can you accept these by consensus and I'll shut up?
Yeah, and can we have the minutes reflected, Ken? Did explain who actually did that?
I couldn't do that, but I wanted to, and I'd try right now.
Thank you. Next item is to approve the personnel report.
On the personnel report this evening, we have a disability leave, a request for disability leave for Sarah Maple. We have four resignations, two of those being athletic coaches and one being one of our academic coaches. We have a unemployment. We're asking to employ Patty Bach for the disability leave for Sarah Maple. And then a new coach, Don Owens, will be coaching at the junior high school and assistant baseball coach.
And yes, that is Patty Bach, former assistant superintendent, licensed administrator, who, to find, first off, Sarah Maple, to find someone who can do her job is amazing, and Patty is a, a great find for us. Those kids are going to be well-served. She'll never replace Sarah with those kids. They love her, but... So I'd recommend you approve the personnel report. And in fact, before that, I would also say that instructional coach and longtime teacher Dale Goke is retiring, or putting in her notice of resignation for retirement, and hers has been a long and stellar career, and she will not be replaced. Someone else will do that, but they won't replace hers.
I'd like to move that we approve the personnel report as presented.
I'll second that.
Thank you very much. All those in favor? The next item is recognition of visitors and/or other business.
I have no other business.
Thank you. We will adjourn to approve the report.
Thank you.